Good afternoon to each of you and thank you for joining us this afternoon for the Putnam County School District Board Meeting for Tuesday, August the 22nd, 2023. This time, we will have our pledge of allegiance to the flag by Mr. Phil Leary and our invocation by Superintendent Rick Serency.
Ms. Jordan, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Superintendent.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this school board and everyone represented here to do the order of business for the children of Putnam County. We ask that you give them wisdom and guidance as they make decisions that will impact our children. We also ask that you be with the family of the young lady who passed away recently, a student of ours.
Yes.
And just continue to comfort them during this very difficult time and those at the school who knew her and who were good friends with her. So just continue to protect our students, our staff, our teachers, everyone involved in the education of our children, and just continue to guide us as we continue to do things to make this county the best county that we can.
Yes.
In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Leary, Superintendent Serency. This time, we will have our first presentation, which will be done by Mrs. Tanya Whitehurst, Grow Your Own.
Good afternoon, Board and Superintendent. Just wanted to give you an update on some changes that we have made and some ways that we're growing even more. So in 2019, we came to you and presented a new initiative that we were starting, Pairs to Pros. And it's where we were focused on our paraprofessionals, getting them in a partnership with St. Leo University so that they could become a teacher, getting that professional certificate. Over the last year, we have grown that and we now have two more partnerships. So we are moving from the title of Pairs to Pros to Grow Your Own. So it is really encompassing more than just our paraprofessionals. It could really be any non-instructional employee who is wanting to become a teacher. And so we partnered with a couple of other universities and colleges to make that happen. So just wanted to kind of give you an update on that. Just as a reminder, why we do what we do, we need teachers. Our historical human capital data has shown that there's been a high turnover rate for many years now for teachers, unfortunately. Nationwide, there's been a decrease in college students enrolling in education programs. You can see that in that graph. Education has decreased in the last 15, 16 years by 22%. And so when we don't have students even enrolling into college of education programs, that's right there is going to tell you that we're gonna, we have a problem. So we now have a lot of teachers that are going through an alternative certification route. If they have a bachelor's degree, we can get them teaching. So that's kind of our motto there. Approximately 50%, and this is actually some new data that has come out in just the last couple of years, approximately 50% of new teachers leave the profession within the first five years of employment. And we want to change that, and we have changed that with some of the initiatives that we have done. We want to focus on the valuable employees that we already have. That's one of our solutions because we know that if they are already here, we're going to keep them. So not only are we recruiting teachers, we've already retained them because they're one of our own. So we now have three pathways for this Grow Your Own. We have partnered with St. John's River State College with their early childhood education program. St. Leo University is still one of our partners, elementary education, middle school, English, or social studies. And then we've also partnered with Grand Canyon University. They offer elementary education and secondary education in almost every one of the content areas. Some of the differences with those programs, I think I have that, so St. John's is, they have, it's really hybrid, so they have some online classes that they're gonna do. They have classes that are on campus, maybe some of the other campuses, Orange Park Campus, St. John's Campus, or St. Augustine Campus. St. Leo University is pretty much at this point, I would say 90% online. Every so often, one of their classes may have to meet once or twice a semester, just as a group. Some of their online classes, though, are synchronous, meaning that they have to meet at a certain time. Everyone is on at the same time so that they can have discussions. And then Grand Canyon University is completely online. So all of the classes are completely online there. One of the things with Grand Canyon University that's a little bit different because they're not a traditional semester by semester. You can actually get, finish your degree in three to three and a half years if you don't have any college classes at all. If you already start with some, it could be even less because it's kind of like a, you go at your own pace. You can finish a class in as little as eight to 10 weeks, and then you move right on to some other classes. They really encourage one class at a time so that you're focusing on that, and you can move a little bit quicker through that. One of the other things that we do, when anyone with an AA or bachelor's degree onboards with us, whatever that position is, we're automatically having a conversation with them. Hey, have you ever thought about being a teacher? If you have an AA degree, let me talk to you about our Grow Your Own. If you have a bachelor's degree, well, let's see how we can get you to take a test and get you certified. So that's just one of the things that we're doing in HR as well. Benefits, St. Leo and Grand Canyon both have reduced tuition for our employees. St. John's River State College, their tuition is already reduced for anyone comparatively speaking to other colleges. So they really didn't have any room to reduce more for us. Grants and scholarships are available to make the programs very affordable. We assist with textbooks once that person has finished with their general prereqs. So basically, once they have those first two years, then we will start assisting with textbooks, either through a checkout process. We have lots of textbooks in my office that they come in and check out, or we will provide a reimbursement at the end of the semester when they show their transcript that they've actually completed those courses. We offer our mentors, who are actually for our novice teachers, they work with any of our paraprofessionals that are working on their teaching degree, especially if they're in the classroom doing some support in that. The mentors have been giving them some support. We've actually helped them with their certification exams. Instructional coaches are working with them, and then our school-based support teams also work with them. So they get a lot of support from the ground as they're moving through. And if you're in a traditional college of education program, you're not going to get that. Preference is given for those vacant teaching positions, and the reason for that is they've basically been doing a two-year interview. And so, you know, a principal knows exactly what they're getting, and so preference, I believe every one of ours that has gone through the program has been given a job at the school that they were a paraprofessional at, or offered jobs from two or three schools, and they were able to choose what they wanted to. And again, current employees are already part of the community, hence growing our own. And that's why we changed it. There's really a nationwide platform of Grow Your Own. So we go to conferences and you see GYO all the time, and you know that that's a Grow Your Own program or a presentation that they're going to be talking about. Since 2019, we have had 36 of our employees enrolled in some form of a program to get their degree. We've had 14 of those 36 graduate, and 13 of them are currently teaching within the school district in one of our schools. So I feel like that's some, that's some really, like, that's 13 teachers that we didn't have, and they're gonna stay with us. The one that we don't have, she was just given an opportunity that she had always dreamed about, and she didn't know how to turn it down. So it's also helping with our equity. You can see historically, our employment equity has been 84% white with 16% minority. Our Grow Your Own program is 22% minority. I know that doesn't look like a lot, but every little bit that we can help with that gap there helps. So we're glad that we are able to really help with that equity and help all of our employees. And WFT in Gainesville came and did a special. Some of you may have watched this news clip. So they had a couple of interns in their senior year, came and did some specials on Putnam County, and it was really about our recruitment and retention. So there were a couple of sessions that they did, or a couple of segments that they did on our novice teacher mentor program, and then they did a segment on our Pairs to Pros. And so I just want to share that in case you did not get to see that.
Putnam School District have been at the top of the blackboard this month. WFT's Ashley Weinstein spent the morning with teachers who are part of the Pairs to Pros program. Ashley, how does this program encourage opportunity from within the district?
This program allows paraprofessional faculty in the district to finish their degrees and become certified teachers while still getting paid. Let's take a further look.
Samantha Edwards worked as a paraprofessional for eight years with a passion for education. Her AA degree did not qualify her to become a certified teacher.
I really want to be a teacher, but, you know, how am I gonna do this? Because I would basically have to quit my job and go to school. That was not an option for me.
Samantha found a way. She's in her second year as a certified teacher. She participated in the first Pairs to Pros class of fall 2019. Paraprofessionals in Putnam County can apply to St. Leo University for a reduced tuition. As long as they have their AA degree, employees receive free books and continue to work while they finish their degree. Administrators believe in focusing on personal and professional growth, starting from within.
My kids went through the school district, my grandkids are going through the school district, so I definitely have a personal investment in what goes on here.
Ten graduates, two in their final internship year, and three currently in the program. Administrators say that many of these paraprofessionals have not only been previously employed by the school district, but are individuals that are deeply rooted within Putnam County.
I know who they are, I know who their siblings are, and it's so great to have that personal relationship, to understand them. You know them socially, so now you're learning them academically.
During the two-year program, students gain more classroom time. Hours for an average education internship year are cut in half. These Pairs to Pros work daily with students.
I actually came to work to the district specifically for the Pairs to Program, Pairs to Pros program. I was a preschool teacher previously for like 12 years.
At the end of the program, they have an education degree in all certifications. Human resources in the county say it can cost $20,000 to train a new hire. This program saves money in the long run and helps the teacher shortage.
So a couple of clarifications, because, you know, when you give information, they don't always get it right. It's, they don't get multiple certifications. So we know that there were a couple of things that was stated in there that wasn't quite completely accurate. But the big thing is, we do have our paraprofessionals who are going through that program. It's, we are helping them in a way that they never thought that they could be helped. The biggest thing is, we do not make them take a leave of absence when they have to do an internship. We have worked with our administrators. Our administrators have been wonderful because they see the value in this program, and they work it out to where whatever position that they're covering as a paraprofessional, they're gonna figure out how to cover that work. And if they absolutely cannot, we allow them to get a sub to cover that so that they can, our paraprofessionals continue to work while they're getting their internship. And you can't, they're not doing that anywhere else. So that was just one of the ways that we're trying to help them with that. We know that there's some other things that are changing in the state with apprenticeships, and we're gonna see how that goes, and that could be another way that we're adding to this program in the next couple of years. A year ago, we were only partnering with St. Leo. Since we opened up the partnership, we have basically doubled the number of people because there are some that are doing St. John's, there are some that are doing St. Leo. We now make it to where they don't have to have an AA degree to start. We just don't really start helping them until they've committed to those first two years. We need some commitment from them as well.
Tanya, historically, our Pairs to Pros that went back to school became the best teachers for the same reasons that they just said. They know the community, they know the kids, they know the school, they know how it works. So what you've done, I think is remarkable.
I can't even tell you how many paraprofessionals that we had on-boarded this summer, that they would come in and say, hey, this person wants to get information, they've heard about it, they want to know what they have to do. So we try to encourage them to, you know, give us a year. Now, if they don't have, if they don't have their first two years done, I'm like, go ahead and get that done. You'll get two years to work with us, you get two years to work on those general recs, and then we'll get you into a program. So this was exciting this year. This was at our new teacher institute, and as you can see here, this is just growing our own. We hired, and I think there were actually a couple of them that were not even available. So I can't even tell you how many's there. I think there's 11 there, or there were 11, I don't know. Somebody count those. Every one of those was a paraprofessional, worked in an office, had worked with us as a paraprofessional, came back. Somebody from NEFEC we got. Like, they may have had a bachelor's degree, but they weren't teaching. So we worked with them, we helped them get what they needed to, to get that temporary certificate or their professional certificate, and every one of them has a classroom, and they are certified teachers at this time. And I just think that right there speaks volumes to what we're trying to do. Questions?
Just one, WFT had this afternoon a program about a school system that went to a four-day work week. And they filled every teacher vacancy that they had two weeks before school started. So, not that I'm advocating four-day work week, but at least it's working for them, so...
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tanya.
Great program. We're now ready for the new construction update by Mr. Bowlin.
Good afternoon, everybody. What's got coming around right now is the schedules for the three schools, the comprehensive schedules. And I'll go over them all in detail as soon as Mike gets me teed up.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so just because the dirt hasn't started moving yet doesn't mean a lot hasn't gone on behind the scenes. We've actually done quite a bit, including today. We spent this morning going over quite a bit of new information. All right, so let's jump right in it. You've all seen this before. This is our 10-year plan that we've been talking about for some time, and, you know, it has three phases. Each phase has three schools, one junior, senior high school, and two elementary schools. The elementary schools are bond schools, junior, senior high schools. Hopefully, we'll be funded by special facilities funding. As you know, Crescent City Junior Senior High School, we've already secured that funding. One thing I want to point out about this particular slide is it says from 2023 to 2025, we've been saying that a lot, but now we're moving away from the conceptual and the things that, you know, are big ideas that we think will probably happen to things that will actually happen. The plan hasn't changed for the elementary schools. The move-in dates will be, hopefully, the beginning of the school year of 2025. But for the junior, senior high school, that school is gonna be completely different. Buildings will be built and then demolished, but before, well, let me put it this way. With the elementary schools, the entire campus will pack up and move over to a brand-new facility, completely constructed. With the high school, once a new building is built, it's ready for service. The students can then occupy it. So full occupation won't happen, and you'll see on the timeline when we kind of dig into it, until sometime 2026. We hope it will occur a little bit sooner, but they'll be enjoying quite a bit of that campus before then. And again, I'll dig into it here in just a second. All right, so Phase One, I've already said it, those are the three schools. Crescent City Junior Senior High School, let me get my, make sure I stay right with you. Crescent City Junior Senior High School is where the current, Crescent City Junior High School is located. Palack Elementary A is where E.H. Miller is currently located, or the former E.H. Miller. And then Crescent City Pre-K Elementary is the new property that we just acquired out in Crescent City. All right, so let's talk about the schedule for our first school, Crescent City Junior Senior High School, and that should be the top page that you have. It's an 1,184 student-station schools for grades seven through 12. It's approximately 228,600 gross square feet. CRA is the architect, and he's here, and he's also the architect for the elementary school, but he's also our design manager for all of our schools in Phase One. So he's here to back me up with any questions you may have afterwards. And then Parrish McCall is our construction manager for this particular project. The, I've already said, the existing location is the current high school. So let's take a look at the schedule. So let's jump right down to, we've already done the June 26th. The schematic documents, we're going over those right now. You guys saw a phasing plan that, Phase One schematic document phasing plan that we submitted to DOE for special facilities funding. That's that phasing where the different buildings hop around on that site. That was pie in the sky. It was three rounds. It was gonna be done in three phases, I should say, because the money was originally gonna be allocated to us in three phases. Now it's coming to us in two iterations, so it's been condensed down to two phases, and I'll show you exactly what those will be. It's no longer hypothetical. We narrowed that down today with the help of Mr. Adams and some other good people in this room. Our owner review, approval of schematic documents, again, we're working on that right now. Design documents, design development documents will be due October 23rd. That's, we'll get our first look at real cost at that time, and then that's documents containing systems, buildings, building components, et cetera. And then on November 6th, owner review, approval of design development, and then 100% construction documents due. Those construction documents will be submitted to NEFEC, St. John's Water Management District, and the Department of Environmental Protection for review, and that's for all our permitting. And then by February of 2024, our construction managers should advertise for subcontractors, and they're getting ready to bid everything out. And then by March 18th, construction managers submit guaranteed maximum price for the board to consider for approval. That should happen on March 18th. So by March 28th, hopefully, you guys will have approved that. And if that happens, and all permits are received, we'll have a notice to proceed for construction. And that should happen by April 4th of next year. We intend to break ground and have an official ceremony, April 11th of next year, for the high school. So Phase One Construction, it's gonna take a while, but Phase One Construction and Move-In will be July 3rd, 2025. And then Phase Two Construction Complete at August 2nd, 2026. And then Phase Two Substantial Completion and Move-In, August of 2026. Again, as the phases are complete, students will occupy, and I'll do a little bit deeper dive of exactly what that looks like on the next slide, or the next several slides. Okay, so here's the current Crescent City Junior Senior High School and site. You've seen that before, that's where we always start there, and it just seems like we can't get to any real drawings of what this school will actually look like besides buildings moving around on the property. But we got our first couple looks. We're getting there. I don't have them today for you. All I have is the schematics for where the buildings will actually go, but this gives you a good look of what's gonna actually happen. And I like this plan a lot, and I'll tell you why. Okay, so we start out with new construction. We have to build new buildings for students to move in before we can demolish anything. And so the new buildings will be a two-story building, and it will consist of 505 student stations. Uh-oh, tried to hit my clicker. I'm sorry, my laser pointer, and I shot over. Okay, so here's where I am. All right, laser pointer. Greg, let me know if I say something wrong, but I think that's the 505 student station building, correct?
Yes, that's the classroom wing.
Okay, it's the classroom wing. And then we have new gym, new locker rooms. While I call this out, do you want to circle where these things are? That would help out tremendously. You're right there.
Can you tell me where we at?
All right, so the classroom wing, two-story, 505 student stations.
That's just right here.
All right, and then you have new gym and locker rooms.
That's right here.
And you'll have 70 student stations there. We have a new CTE above the locker rooms.
Right in this area.
And then new band and vocal.
Right here.
70 student stations in that particular building. And then new CTE labs will have 90 student stations there for a total of 815 student stations. That's before anything is demolished, 815 student stations going in. Now, this is what I really like about this plan, and just hit the right clicker, go to the next page. So when we take out student stations, we're taking out buildings, 19, the band room, building 21, classroom buildings, building 24, the two-story classroom building, the admin building, guidance building, which has 50 student stations, gym and classrooms, another 185 student stations, CTE, 58 student stations, and portable number four.
It's right in this area.
And that's 25 student stations. So we're building 815 student stations up front, but we're only taking out 784. That means we're not sticking portables anywhere, and that's what I like the most about this particular plan. All right, let's move on. All right, and then we'll go in and construct the new administration, guidance, and food service. Media Center, which should be on the second floor. And then we'll have ESC-type classrooms, both floors, 155 student stations. And then we'll have another classroom building, which is 350, and that's a two-story building, 350 student stations, for a total of 505 student stations. And that's Phase Two Construction. And then Phase Two Demolition on to the next would be what's left with, what's left of administration, I'm sorry, what's left of Building One, which is classrooms, and then Building One, which is the cafeteria. So what's left of Building One, Building 24, the media center, and then two portables. Those two portables, right down there, 25 student stations each. So that's 441 student stations taken out, but we've just constructed 505. And then comes the cleanup.
The old media center is still on that, I mean, the current media center, right? It's the kind of...
The one in the...
Right, right there.
Yeah.
When does that go?
That is coming down at that point. The previous phase, let me back up.
The red is what's disappearing.
Yeah, in this, in this, in this phase, it's built here, and then the next phase, we tear it down.
Okay. All right.
Okay. And then cleanup, which is the very last slide. And then you want to talk about just entrance, exits, bus loops.
What we're looking at is, let me make sure I got this right here, the bus, looking here is where I'm at. Bus loop's right here. There's a main spine-covered walkway coming down that comes right to the front door of the administration. Over on the left's the parent drop, so we have queuing from Highway 17 out here all the way up around, so we should be able to get them off the highway there. We've got parking here, we have parking here, we've got some additional parking down here by the football field. That's kind of where we're, what we're looking at for parking right now. The existing bus area over here, we left the fueling station there, so it's there at this time. Stormwater pond's up here, so that's kind of the overall layout of everything. It separates the middle school and the high school. You can do it in two different wings, or you can do it vertically, first floor, second floor. So it gives... So it gives, gives Tim a lot of opportunity there, we just started talking about how that might look.
And that, the administration is actually gonna be facing Union Avenue as opposed to Highway seventeen though?
Yes, it is right here looking, looking right there. Right there. We looked at multiple schemes before we got to this, and we went through multiple schemes to get the, to, to get the student stations count right. We could come up with schemes that, we had to bring portables in, so we had to back up and start over and do it. But we've been meeting with Tim and staff, and this turned out to be a real good solution.
Our CM was present this morning as well, and he's very confident that he can pull this plan off as well, so we, uh...
I really don't see PE fields. I see a football field, I see the softball and baseball field, but I don't see a dedicated field.
This area here, we're gonna come in and clean all of this out here and create, create fields there.
Okay.
Circle those buses over there too, and I'll talk about that when we get to the elementary school.
Yeah, right here.
I would very much like to free that space up, Tim, we've talked about it a lot.
I'm not sure, but...
They could definitely use it.
Thomas, I'm not sure, but don't we still own the property to the old seventeen below the ball field area?
We own right...
Right down in there.
Right there.
All the way to old seventeen there.
There's some opportunities there, but how wet is that? I don't have Travis here.
I, I...
Pretty wet.
Tim, is that wet here?
It's very wet.
It is a little wet, but there's some ideas that we have going on for that area down there as well, so...
I can see parking at football games, you know, I mean, it, it's always been a problem, so I guess it will still remain.
But we also have that new parking lot above there.
Mm-hmm.
It will have twice the amount of student parking as well as the faculty and staff parking. I've dealt with my administrative team and my athletic director talking about making parking up that way. You know, when we go to a lot of away games, other schools haven't paid for parking there, so...
It's my idea.
And we are certainly...
Kitty.
It's the further storage.
Well, look at it, yeah.
Yep.
So, Thomas, what, the demolition portion of it, that's a noisy, messy process, been in that before. So how are you gonna coordinate that with the other activities there?
Um, Parrish Mc, Bill?
Yeah, Bill Pearson with Parrish McCall.
Bill Pearson was here this morning, and, you know, he spoke to the majority of the heavy lifting happening during the summer. But if there are some opportunities to do some things that aren't too intrusive during the school year, we will.
Okay.
We just finished a project with them in Levy County at Chiefland High School. Same exact thing, tear, build something new, tear something down. And we went through that with them, and every day, the superintendent and project manager met with the principal, coordinated what they were doing, we got test schedules, those types of things, and really looked ahead to make it work. So they did it there, I'm very confident they can do it here.
So any of that material would be recycled, the concrete, or is it all...
It, right now, it is, we haven't had that conversation yet.
Um, I have one question, Mr. Adams, you can help me with this. Turning in from Highway seventeen, right by the football field, that's, that's a big problem. Unless they give us a turn lane in there, because I can think of the Wosnaskis being rear-ended right there, trying to turn in. It's, people are going very fast right there.
You're talking about this, this right here?
Yes.
Off of seventeen.
Miss Pickens, when, when I was interim manager of Crest City, we met with DOT and requested that, that they put both axle, D-cell lanes on that turn. And of course, isn't there, maybe, maybe we could call Mr. Browning, who's on the transportation division. City, but it's a logical thing, it's, it's a safety problem even without a football game.
Right now, it's a safety problem, and if you're gonna put parents to queue for parent pickup there, then it becomes even more of a problem. And that's really not a long, I mean, that little turn is pretty quick. You can't have people waiting there, and, and school buses exit that way. So that, that, that is a very, very crowded area.
That would be a really great thing to have, but my experience with DOT is, it's really hard. They have some really different rules that we don't always understand. Phil probably has worked with them some, with some of the things he's dealt with, but, you know, just to get a traffic light, you've gotta have X number of deaths.
Well, with this, it would actually make their transportation model flow better, because you, you wouldn't have any, you know, interaction with that, it'd just be flowing both ways.
We agree, I mean, it makes...
Well, no, and they, they agreed that, with us, when we met with them, even though that's not in the city limits. And so I'll have to go back and look at my notes, and I know the engineer we talked to, but...
David Bowen, I believe, is, Bowen is who we talked to.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so you know, also, we, we did get funding to put in turn lanes, so...
Okay.
So there's some money in there to do that.
Now, the, the student parking can still go out and go the other, the other entrance?
Yes, 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 yes.
Oh, I did it again with the...
So, so when you, when you build that, you'll have a D-cell lane coming to the south to turn in, and then an axle lane for it to go around there, so...
It'll be on our property.
That's student parking.
We, we don't, we don't have it designed yet, but we asked for funding for it.
I got you.
Yep, so we'll meet with DOT and have that conversation.
Alright, good deal.
Good.
Yeah, they should be very receptive, if they're not letting me know.
If you've got your own money, they will be.
We've lost too many kids to traffic accidents right down there.
Okay, any more questions with the Junior Senior High School in Crest City? Okay. Alright, so let's take a look at the Palaca School. Casper is the architect, Osley is the construction manager. So eleven hundred and five student station, pre-K six school, approximately a hundred and sixty-nine thousand square feet. As I said before, the location is the former E. H. Miller. Let's jump down to, I don't wanna waste your time with the things that have already happened, but let's go all the way down to August eleventh, and the things that are happening here. Board approval for CM's ranking, we've done that. Board negotiates CM's contract, kinda, done that. Board approves CM's contract, you'll get a contract in front of you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We've already done that one too. The contract that's coming before you today is actually Ajax. You've, you've, you've already done this one, so you've actually done all of that. Owner review, review approval of design development, we're kind of there. I think we have an upcoming meeting. So one hundred percent construction documents will be due October twenty-fourth. Early demolition plans released, construction manager bids building demolition, notice to proceed for building demolition, and then construction documents submitted to NEFEC Water Management and Department of Environmental Protection for permitting. We intend to break ground here October thirtieth, the day before Halloween, and that would be for demolition at this particular site. And then the CM will advertise for contract subcontractors on November twenty-first. Hopefully, that is submitted, I'm sorry, a guaranteed maximum price is submitted to the board, hopefully by January fifth. If that's approved on the fifteenth, we should have a notice to proceed for construction by January twenty-second, assuming that all permits are received. We should have substantial completion and move-in in the summer of twenty twenty-five, with a move-in date and a start date when school starts. Alright, so let's take a look at what it looks like. This is the current site of E. H. Miller. And I could've made it a little bit bigger so it shows, but I, I did it again. I did wanna show Horseman Club Road and Davis Lake Road. So I zoomed out far enough so you could see that, so you could kinda orient yourself on the map. Seventeen would be up here, kinda looping around.
Nineteen.
And then, I'm sorry, nineteen, thank you, David. And then this is, pretty much our property line is where these trees are. Not a whole lot left over there and up top here. So that's the existing site. Here's kinda what it would look like with the new school on it. This is actually the design of the new school. You would have additional property, where's my, here, on the, this end of the property. There's additional playground area here, I know it's kinda hard to see that with the pointer, but I'll illustrate it a little bit, a few slides later. So we have the main office up front, the media center kinda right behind it, just to orient, orient you where everything is. So it's a grand central corridor going straight down the middle of the school, with the cafeteria and multipurpose room being in the back, along with the gym kinda on that back lower corner. And then you have your classroom wings, which offshoot. The primary wings are up closer towards Horseman Club, and then the intermediate wings are closer to the, the back of the school. That's kind of the general layout of it. So this is the front face, and I kinda want you to pay attention to this retention pond, and it'll kinda explain the last slide that we have, that, where those pretty fountains are, that's actually a retention pond. I don't know that it'll actually look like, like that, this is kind of the graphics program. Usually those are fenced in and, and just dry grass, if you look at the ones we have right now, but I think that's just for the effect of it. This is the front, the other side of the school, so if you were going down Horseman Club Road, and you're kinda driving right on past it, and look back over your left shoulder, that would be your view. Again, kinda the, think about where the, the retention pond is in this particular rendition, front of the school. And then this is kind of an aerial, so you can see the whole thing. The gymnasium is in the back right, this is all a single-story school. It's a pretty big school.
Seems like they'd let you put the retention pond in that southwest corner where it's kinda...
Well, it's moving, that's why I, I asked you to kinda pay attention to where it is right here. Now, now that we have engineers...
Oh, okay, I was just curious.
This, this was kinda, when, when these were made, these were the architects, but when the engineers started, started to dig in, that's okay. They, things did change a bit.
I worked there for three years out of college, so I know the site real well.
So that's the front of your school, and then the bottom is the backside. It's just kind of an illustration of the front and the back. Okay, and this was, this was added on a few days ago, and that's that same stormwater, stormwater retention pond. It's now flip-flopped, so the parking lot, if you go back. So instead of being on that side of the school, it's the other side of the school.
Well, I think the geographic run, is the drainage, it drains that way anyway, so your elevations, yeah.
And I mean, that's, that's why we go from the beautiful conceptual back to this, because it's, it's brand-new, and that's where that retention pond will actually be. I guess you could. But you can see, there's plenty of play space in the back, you know, and that's the full property right in there, so that gives a pretty good illustration of it. Alright, any questions about that one?
And so the parent, how's parent pickup working?
Parent pickup will be on the...
Yes, parents, parents will come in.
Horseman's Club.
Let me look at mine. It's not that I don't trust you, Rick, I'm just double-checking before I agree with that. I believe parent pickup is off of Horseman's Club.
Should be coming off Davis Lake Road, but Thomas is gonna be there for that.
That's probably right, 'cause we used to store buses out there, and they would come off Davis Lake Road.
Do they circle around to go back out?
Take all that traffic.
And we bought, you remember, not too long ago, we bought some access off Davis Lake Road.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, I remember now, you're absolutely right. And what's the name of that road, is it Brandon, that runs behind?
I think so, yeah.
I, I think it's Brandon.
It's Brandon.
But we bought, where's my pointer at? We bought about up to here on Brandon, so we could access this back corner of the property for buses. You're absolutely right. And then parent pickup would be on Horseman Club. If you hadn't asked that question, I would've been right there with you, but...
That's all, yeah.
Yes.
The, the, the parent drop-off and pickup is coming onto the site, it's three lanes to increase the capacity to get more cars on there.
And then the buses enter and exit on that Davis or Brandon?
Horseman's Club to Davis Lake.
Davis Lake.
So we are gonna talk to the church property owner about maybe coming off of nineteen with a D-cell lane, it could just cut straight over to Brandon.
We had talked about that, but I think you, I think you did some studying, I think that's not gonna be necessary, is that correct? But we did talk about that.
And, and, and so y'all will submit a traffic circulation plan to DOT?
Yes, yes, we got one, we did traffic counts.
Yeah, we, we've done quite a bit, and, and, well, we use Kelly Smith as a model.
Okay.
And we can, we can stack a considerable amount of, well, more than an adequate amount of cars onto the property itself.
There's no D-cell lane going southbound on nineteen to, to Horseman's Club though. I mean, it's, it's, I live right down the road from there, so I know the area very well. So what would be great, if, if we could figure out a way, whether it's gotta be DOT or us, to build a D-cell lane for those buses to, yeah, to get off of nineteen?
I will have civil look into, there's civil look into that.
Okay.
To turn, to turn right?
Yeah, to be turned right, D-cell, because they'd be coming from north.
But going the other way, there is a, a turn lane.
Yes, going the other way, there is a turn lane.
Right.
Alright, Crest City Elementary. So the architect is CRA, and the construction management firm is Ajax. We actually have Mr. Marini here from Ajax, and you'll be considering their contract here very shortly. And it's very similar in size and scope to the Palaca Schools. Eleven hundred and five student stations, approximately a hundred and sixty-nine thousand square feet. Project location is the new sixty-three acre site at the corner of Huntington Road and Union Avenue. So notice to proceed for architect was June twenty-sixth, and the schematic documents were due. We're, we're moving on down the road with this particular school, even though we're just, you guys are just looking at numbers today. Jumping down to design development, documents being due. Once we get agreed on all the particulars, we should have a notice to proceed for the construction manager by October first.
Thomas, could I interrupt you real quick and go back to soil borings and the geotechnical report? That area has a high tendency for sinkholes.
That's first I've heard about that.
Well, predominantly because of the fern frost freeze protection, even though the fern industry's waning. That was one of the first studies I did when I got out of UF and worked for the Water Management District. But that geotechnical report's gonna be very important to see what kind of, you know, hydrology in that particular field. I've never seen any depressions there, but need to be real careful with that.
We have, we have already laid out soil boring locations on it, and have authorized the geotech, so in the next couple of weeks, he should start, and we will let you know if there's cars featured there.
Okay, good deal.
Okay, so owner review and approval of design development, we should get the final approval, approval by October fifteen. Hundred percent construction documents due by December fourteenth, and then we'll advertise for subcontractors by early January. Construction manager will submit a guaranteed maximum price for the board to consider by February twenty-fifth. And then hopefully, if that's approved on March sixth, we'll get the notice to proceed for construction by March thirteenth, and we're looking for groundbreaking by March fourteenth. And that will be actually shovel-in-the-dirt, moving it, ceremonious, getting ready to actually go to work, go to work there. This school should be completed by July twenty twenty-five, and we should have kids ready, ready to transfer over to this school in the new school year, August twenty twenty-five. Alright, so this is the site, we actually own more than, we actually own more than that square, this cleared-out square. This is Huntington Road, this is Union Avenue, just to kinda orient you, if you continue to go up Union Avenue, you'll run into seventeen, and that would be the corner of Tim's school, Crest City Junior Senior High, would be up here. This is Union Avenue coming down to Huntington, if you take this and go on around. The current elementary school, Middleton Bernie, is over here. So we own this property coming all the way down to about right here in this lake, and then coming back... then coming back up and then coming across. So it's quite a bit of property, um, and I'll talk about, I'll loop Tim School back in, in just a minute, the, the high school and some plans that, um, aren't currently funded, but they're kind of pie in the sky, but I think they're necessary, um, in addition to just the elementary school. So here it is, um, this is an aerial of the, just the, the development layout plans. Parent pickup is coming in. I, I wish I had a, a dollar for every time I've done that today. Parent pickup is coming in, um, off of Union and then, um, up here and then stacking traffic here and then the buses are coming in off of Huntington here. Um, this square off in the back here doesn't have anything to do with this plan whatsoever, but I think it would be a great location for that bus compound that's sitting over there taking up the remaining space on the high school, uh, property that they could probably use for, if nothing else, growth. I mean, you, we don't, we don't leave a lot of room over there right now for portables, um, so I'd like to see us free up that area and, and that, I think that would be a good spot for another bus depot and it doesn't take a whole lot to locate a bus garage here. The major work happens in Palaca, so we don't need, uh, you know, the substantial amount of equipment that they have, um, in Palaca down in Crest City. Okay, so here's a larger picture of just the school again, I'm getting off the bus, um, soapbox, um, but here it is, and... That's the front of the school, parent pickup and, and staging. That's another view of the front of the school. And that's the rear of the school and if you were to, um, I take that back, it's a different picture. But that's a picture of the very, um, rear of the school. And this is, if you were going down Huntington, going towards Middleton Bernie Elementary, you would see kind of that side angle with the gymnasium, with the gymnasium being on the backside here. You have any questions about this school, especially since we have the man here who, um, designed it and the man that's going to build it?
So the designs for both Palaca and Crest City are fairly sim- similar and, and the layout on the ground are pretty, pretty...
As far as having a central corridor and classroom wings, kind of, but the Palaca build, um, the cafeteria is towards the front. Here it's at the rear, or do I have that backwards?
Backwards here.
Okay. Cafeteria's up front here and in Palaca it's in the, uh, it's in the rear. Um, the gyms are both at the back ends of the school. The check-in is kind of similar, um, and you have, um, guidance and, or media right off of the main office on both schools, correct?
Thomas, if I may, we actually sent a team, actually Holly was on that team, to Baker County and, uh, there's actually a elementary school up there that was built recently, uh, I think Greg had, well, you designed that one too.
Yes.
But that is very similar to this exact school and it was really neat to, I did not go, but our team went and, uh, just to see and make some adjustments based on what we saw, so I know our curriculum folks and, uh, finance went and, you know, s- safety went, so we had, we wanted to look at that and really, uh, kind of make some adjustments, so I, I think that's been very helpful.
I, I would just like to mention that on these pictures and in the drawings, it looks like it's really spread out and kind of uninviting, but when you get in there, it's amazing. So it, the way it's set up, it's...
They took, y'all took some photographs and that cafeteria looks like it's got its own weather system, it's so good, it's huge.
I've got it.
Thank you.
Yes, yes ma'am.
Um, I saw just on the, the photographs there, it looks like at the end of every, um, wing, it, it appears to be a door on the end of that, are those emergency exits?
Yes.
Okay, so each wing has...
That's the end of corridors, emergency exits and then if, uh, we do card systems, those doors will have card systems.
And then in the back where the, I guess the gymnasium was, it looks like there's an open area though to go from the...
Covered play there.
Okay.
Covered play, that's the...
You're speaking of this area here?
Well, i- in between the, the, the buildings, there were play areas too.
Those are up front, right?
For like age-appropriate play area right there for them.
Hey, kindergarten.
And it's built kind of like a fort to protect...
Those would be towards the front wings, right?
To state, new state security measures and all, at the same time, you won't see as many windows and things on the outer perimeter as you, in the older schools.
Ms. Marini, you, you have any comments at all about, um, have you had some experience with this kind of?
Well, we, we've got a little experience with, uh, CRA and tons of different schools. I think it's a fantastic design. Um, we've already begun the process of in-house estimating, so we're getting that process going, we're working with the team to provide that information as soon as possible.
Yeah, thank you very much.
With all, it's great.
Yep, looking forward to it. We're very fortunate to have that property there too, that's going to really, uh, make a huge difference in the timing and everything, so...
And no land clearing, just go in a hayfield and build.
Stop building.
Don't get many of those.
No, true.
Got to move some hay bales out of the way, but...
Yeah.
Thomas, you mentioned the boring, the solar.
And Phil, there's people begging for recycled concrete to crunch up to make driveways and stuff, so there's, that's, there's going to be a lot of opportunities to get rid of all that old stuff.
Great job, Ms. Bowen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, if there are no more questions, no more presentations, we'll move to public comments. Mrs. Michael, did we get any? Okay, no public comments, we'll move into, no public hearing as well, we'll move into our consent agenda. We're going to start with you, Mrs. Pickens, is there anything that you would like to pull? Mr. Buckles? Okay, Mrs. Wagner?
E7 was the one I wanted to hear as well.
So you and Mr. Buckles, okay, all right. Mr. Leary?
Madam Chairman, I was going to pull, pull all items G, but I understand Mr. Buckles had a volleyball game to go to and so, France was kind enough, she's going to set up a special school 101 for me on all items in G, so I don't have to pull anything.
I got three, three different volleyball games to go to.
All righty.
Four granddaughters playing.
All right, I don't have anything to pull, mine was taken care of, my questions were answered, all right.
Madam Chairman, I move approval of consent agenda with the exception of E7 and E9, I believe that was it.
I'll second.
All right, it was motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept the consent agenda for today minus items E7 and E9 and it was second by Mrs. Linda Wagner, all right? All in favor? Well, any questions, anything else we need to discuss, all right? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chair, we have Mr. Bowen here and he has, uh, Mr. Spalding and Mr. Kelly, Mr. Marini, whoever you need to answer all the questions about those two items.
Okay.
I'll let Linda, Linda ask questions first.
And, and I know that I had some of my questions answered previously, but my concern was in looking at, um, this property, 113 Putnam County Boulevard, um, it looks that the sale price is 750,000?
The current contract is 750,000.
Okay, and I was just looking at the property because I like to be aware of where the properties are that we're talking about, um, but I saw it listed on multiple sites for like, um, 1.39, I think, um, and I just wanted some additional information or discussion going on about, quite specifically, we're almost at half price of the, is that the, uh, appraised value or is that just...
Yes ma'am, the, um, the list price of any work I've done for the school has been exactly at appraised value, um, and then obviously, uh, offers are pretty much always made on real estate. We've had to, including the current, uh, offer we're discussing, we've had two other offers, uh, went under contract with one at 900,000, uh, for a developer and after a very short period of time relatively speaking, he bowed out because of the cost of the demolition mainly. We got asbestos in there, which is known and is told up front to everybody, obviously the school has very good reports on that, uh, but just overall, uh, cost of that, uh, the developer elected not to proceed. Like I said very early, I was very surprised when he canceled. That same day that contract was accepted, we had another one at 750, that one was at 900, like I said, had another one at 750, that obviously we denied because we had one for 900. So that seems to be the, uh, what the market is suggesting the value of the property.
Is, i- i- when they're doing the appraisals, I'm assuming they're doing it for an as-is, whatever's there, that, so they're not, are you saying that they're not taking into consideration the purpose that these people are buying?
That's exactly correct and the comparable sales on all of the properties for this particular appraisal in this school were either to, uh, other schools or government entities, uh, something like that, not a individual private use or developer use, uh, and so those factors were not taken into it at all.
Linda has asked the questions that, that, are you through? That I was going to go over and we have an appraised value and if I'm understanding this correctly, only the board can go below the appraised value to vote and the superintendent doesn't do that.
We normally, we normally would, uh, 90% of the appraised value or higher, I would normally, um, you know, um, take action on that, but anything below that is the board's discretion.
And now that we've had, we've had this on the market, how long, Mark?
I can tell you exactly, um, two, over two years, uh, 793 days as of today.
I thought we had a real good shot at the, you know, early on with the $900,000 bid, knowing the asbestos, because I used to be the assistant principal there and in years the superintendent dealing with the facility and the problems there, but, uh, I, I just wanted to clarify all that for everybody so they don't think, what Linda, the point she pointed out, that it's, you've got to have asbestos removal and it's going to be, I mean, that thing was built in the 30s or 20s or sometime, I don't know, and then added on to with asbestos and we've encapsulated it over the years, but it's still, it's going to be very expensive. But, uh, that was all I wanted to know, I, I figured it was a couple of years, so, and we haven't had any other bites. I know one gentleman called me one day for lunch wanting to talk about it, but he never gave a bid, you know, on the deal, so...
Any offer I have received has been relayed to just district.
Mr. Leary has comments?
Yeah, I just had some comments to support the, uh, the approval of the application. So I looked at that last week because I was working on another piece of property for a client about a mile down the road from there and, you know, essentially, and I've read the appraisal and I don't need to remind y'all that appraisals are ours, they're not science and so, yeah, they're very fluid, um, I think 750,000 is an incredible offer, um, and that, that property from a land use standpoint is, is really got some limitations now than what it had years ago when 17 was a sleepy little two-lane highway and now we have all that intense, and are going to get more intense development on 17. So, um, this application, I think, will be phenomenal if we can, if we can get it to fruition.
Okay.
I don't have any more comments.
Anything else?
No.
There we go.
Having said that, madam, that, madam Chairman, if there are no more comments, having said that, I'll make a motion that the board accept the proposal based on the fact that we've had this on the market several years and, uh, I think we're, we've, we've got a, it's time to fish our cut bait and, uh, get on with building, turning in lanes and things like that on some of our new school properties, so...
Second.
All right, it's been motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept item E7, uh, regarding property on 113 Putnam County Boulevard in East Palaca and it was second by Mr. Phil Leary, having hearing, no more discussion. Are we ready to vote? We are? All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, well, motion carries by two.
Thank you, Mark.
All righty, Mrs. Pickens?
Hi, um, my concern, and I, and I talked to Thomas about this, was that this, um, particular item says a revised construction manager pre-construction fee proposal and I did not remember ever seeing a previous one, so I just, I just wanted clarification on that.
Well, that's correct, um, but we did run their Ajax contract before you, but it didn't have any numbers, it was, um, language. Today we're bringing the actual numbers, um, and, and we've taken a look at them and, and, you know, we, we, uh, we're, you know, the administration is satisfied, um, with their numbers and their proposal and it lines up well with Ozley, um, which is a very similar site, they're the elementary school in Palaca, so, um, they're, they're in lockstep, so, you know, I current, I personally recommend that, um, we accept it, but I would like for Mr. Marini to step forward and, and give you his explanation.
Thank you, thank you guys, thank you everyone. Um, so what we were, what we were attempting, if you want the story, so the, the, what we were attempting to do is give, uh, the language for the contract to the board for approval so that, you know, the, the language could be read. I, I know, uh, Carol looked it over, um, we had addressed some minor comments, what I would consider minor, and at the same time, we had submitted the first, uh, pre-construction phase fee proposal. And the process actually worked because Mr. Bowling and his team looked it over and said, hey, can we cut here, can we cut there? It was negotiated to, you know, what we, we all now consider a fair pre-construction phase fee and so now, you know, if, if everybody agrees, we can put that value into the contract and execute. So there was some additional information provided from us up front in the interest of transparency, but just probably the most important thing is, none of this matters as far as us proceeding, we proceeded immediately upon a receipt of the document, so we're already estimating, so we appreciate the, uh, the, the talk and discussion so that, you know, we can explain and I hope that is good with everyone. And if anybody has any questions, please.
Thank you.
Can I add to, please, negotiations, they came down about $60,000, so I wanted to make you aware of that.
And Mr. Bowling and his team had questions, I mean, to me, that's the process working, um, and then getting the right number into the contract and I think that is what Mr. Bowling and his team did and we did, so I think it was perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept item E9.
I'll second it.
You gave way to Buckles.
Yes.
I'll say it.
Okay, it's, it's been motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item E9 and it was second by Mr. David Buckles, all right? Uh, we've had our discussion, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Okay, we are now ready to emergency, uh, to go into emergency session. We have four items, I think it is, that we are to look at for approval.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we accept item L1, out-of-state travel justification, explanation, time-sensitive.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L1, out-of-state travel, uh, it is time-sensitive and it was second by Mr. Phil Leary. Are we ready to vote, uh, any discussion? All right? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there are none, motion carries.
Madam Chairman, I will move approval of emergency item L2, um, the memorandum of understanding between the Putnam County School District and Putnam County Health Department... understanding between the Putnam County School District and Putnam County Health Department, and again, the justification, it is very time-sensitive.
I'll second that.
All right, L two, motion by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept. The Putnam County School District and the Putnam County Health Department, justification, explanation, time-sensitive, and second by Mr. David Buckles. Any discussion? Hearing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, well, motion carries five zero.
And Madam Chair, if I may, on item three, I believe there's some discussion that needed to be had on that.
Yes, yes. All right, Mr. Lennon Harvey had an opportunity to speak with him today regarding that one as well, and so he's going to come up and he's going to share that information with us, and I think you have someone with you that will be able to answer questions that we may have, if you will come, please.
Yes ma'am, I'm going to invite Mr. Mahoney, he's with Verkata. He's our accountant, or rep that has been working with us, introduced the product to us, and so I guess, let me give the questions that, out of the way first, before we get into that. Did you all have some specific questions you wanted to ask?
I think as, as what we were discussing, this is the first I had seen of any of this, and, and it was right around one point eight million dollars.
Sure.
I'd like at least a, a full kind of explanation of what this is, that we're spending this kind of money on, why it's an emergency at the moment, and, and how this funding is, is being arranged.
And one of the questions ties in, my concern was the, the schools, it's, it's only for the high school, and then I asked Mr. Lennon, I said, well, Crescent City High is going to be constructed, the new building, why are we doing this? And the explanation made sense to me.
These are security cameras.
So he's going to share, give us a whole.
Security cameras, vape detection, and then an alarm system taken as well.
So, Mr. Lennon, if you will go ahead and take us to it.
And I'll answer Ms. Gilliard's question first. So we are targeting all of the high schools right now, the junior, senior highs, Crescent City, QI, IHS, and Palatka High. We're wanting to put vape cameras out there, or not vape cameras, security cameras, vape detection, so kids in a bathroom smoking, the sensor will go off, and then we can see who's leaving that bathroom situation. We're, we're wanting to have robust cameras out there. Right now, we're sitting on cameras that are about ten to twelve years old, their past their lifetime. In technology career field, you want to replace stuff at three to five years, five years being the greatest. We have hobbled and pieced together what we have for the past five, seven years.
If you want to be able to zoom in and see faces and things like that, and.
Right, and then, yeah, you, so with this, it has AI built into it, and you're able to see faces, you can say, I want to see a kid with a red book bag, or I want to see this license plate. We're able to identify, or, you know, do a reach out for those particular things, and Verkata cameras will deliver on that. And so, back to the question of Crescent City being built, the, once those schools get built, these cameras are plug and play. So we've already been dealing with the, the, the person that's in charge of building the schools, and letting them know this is what our preference is, is what we want to move towards, and so whenever the, the cabling's going to be in place, all we have to do is disconnect the cameras from the facility that's being torn down, and then plug and play. So it, it won't be an additional cost for us in that respect. But just to give an overview, if you can.
Yeah, just to pick up where he left off, and I'll get into the products themselves. What we're going to help save a lot of money with current builds and the new builds, is you're eliminating the server model. So anyone that's familiar with like, security systems, if you're looking at anything from a camera to access control, it all goes back to a centralized server, which as a district is a single point of failure. If you looked at Uvalde in some of those instances, it also means you're beholden to only viewing that stuff and accessing from a, a single site, not remotely. And then when you're looking at these new builds, that means more rack space, you have to buy the servers, there's an associated VMS maintenance contract, all that gets eliminated in our model. So what you're looking at, the one point eight, that's a tenure cost of ownership. So normally, what you guys probably haven't seen over the past seven years is the bleed effect. I call it deferred maintenance. You're probably having servers that are going offline, so maybe weekly or monthly, you guys are actually doing an outlay of cash, it's not making the board agenda. I know about, what was about six or eight months ago, you guys had the one system where, I believe the intrusion detection system didn't go on, or didn't go off, didn't detect some students that did some vandalizing, and then as a result, that cost about a hundred thousand dollars for the district. So the beauty of this system is, where we're making the camera system a little more robust, you get baked in twenty-four-seven monitoring, so everything's a proactive stand. So it's helped free up all of your guys' administration from being coming beholden to this system, the system does the work for you, so you have a smaller crew actually keeping your school safe. And with the monitoring that's built in, the beauty of that is, you actually have a visual verification on any event that goes on. So that way, in the case of where, you know, on the Sunday, the intrusion detection system didn't go off, there is no visual to see what went on. I think it took about six hours worth of scrubbing footage to do so. With our baked-in AI, if that alarm is triggered on the backend, it'll proactively alert you to it. The actual monitoring service will call Mr. Weaver, whoever is in charge, you guys can come create a decision tree, to say, hey, there's actually visible evidence of theft, whatever might be going on, and they can do emergency dispatch. That also will cut down on false positives when it comes to an intrusion detection system, which is another monetary outlay. So everything kind of bakes in together, it's a single platform to manage everything, and then the big thing for you guys, when you're looking at that cost point, is not only what we're saving you from a hardware perspective, ongoing maintenance, none of that's done, it's all free through our licensing agreement, and the biggest thing, when he was saying you're looking at security, how you should be looking at IT, that's a three-to-five-year refresh, all of our stuff gets better over time. I call it appreciating asset, because you get automatic firmware updates, which is a fancy term for saying, anytime we have a new feature or function that's released, you guys get that free of charge. I know Tommy's in the room in IT, there's no leg lift to your guys' employees, so we're not now taking them out of their day-to-day jobs to go apply a piece of software to all of your hardware that you've already paid for. So once you kind of set the model, the AI does all the proactive functioning for you, and in the case right now, you guys have already done an outlay with us for about, I think like, eighteen sensors and eighteen cameras, I think was the first, like, pay proof of concept, and the beauty is, when it bakes in together, you get proactive alerts. So when it comes to vaping or anything like that, if you guys have students, for example, that might get suspended, you can actually upload a profile. So if they were to try to sneak back on campus, whatever the circumstance might be, maybe the parent that's not legally allowed to pick up a student, you can create a profile, the system does the work for you, they show up back on campus, the camera notify, sees them, you get a proactive alert. Text message, email, they'll link to the actual camera feed, saying, hey, someone's on campus right now that shouldn't be, and that allows you to delegate in real time. So just a little bit more high level and everything.
I mean, I'm, I'm in favor, because I, I know what Travis goes through, and what he's done for years trying to do this, and I know what superintendent, by sending this to us, needs. I, my only concern is that we need to make sure that we go to the transportation facilities, and probably will, and other things. I mean, I've had, I can remember forty thousand dollars worth of bus tires being slashed over, you know, two-hour period on a weekend at Crescent City High School. It's, there's too many things that can happen now, and being able to find out if this person has been someone that's been arrested for threatening people in the community with a firearm in their own campus, the, the adaptation of what you're talking about is what we're, we really need, and Lennon, I appreciate you bringing this to us.
So ideally, what we wanted, I'm sorry, we wanted to focus on the high schools, because that's where we have a lot of the behavior issues. I sit on the expulsion committee.
Ideally, we need to look at expanding too.
And so, and then, our, our, our thought process was, we get this into the high schools, and then we go to the elementary schools, and then all, all these other outline departments. I mean, yeah, we would like to have Verkata cameras everywhere, but money.
One of the things Mr. Harvey shared with me, another feature, is that, like he said, we sit on the expulsion committee, and a lot of times, we see a fight there, and you're shaking your head because you're in agreement, we're just saying, uh-huh, we see them fighting. But that parent can honestly, like he said, say, that's not my kid. I mean, and it will be hard for us to prove it, it's kind of like, but what we do is watch the expression of the kid, you know, when, when he, he knows it's him, or she knows, but this will give you, I mean, it's right up on them. I mean, like, stars in the face, everything.
Yeah, so it's like the cutting edge, like visuals for everything. Everything has three X digital zoom baked into every camera. You guys also have some camera models that have optical zoom, which is a fancy way of saying, you can actually shoot that camera down the hallway and still pick up on a face. So there's that facial recognition built in, and nice even when you guys were talking about the new builds at these new schools, we can kind of be souped to nuts for everything, from access control, also visitor management. You guys have Raptor right now, we can replace that, that ties into the cameras. It also has sex offender databases, Interpool, all that stuff in backend, so you're getting credential to the front end, a camera's picking them up. So if you have a ten ninety-nine in these new constructions, where you guys are doing stuff with different schools, when they sign in, you can track them around your guys' facilities, and if you do move to us for access control in the future, you can actually pre-credential someone to only have access to certain doors. So you guys can actually build out that ecosystem as you continue to expand the footprint.
I just have a, maybe a couple of comments, but another couple of questions as well. Just to confirm, now, you're talking about four schools.
It's four in the high schools, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And as far as the cost, that's going to be eight hundred thousand for the first year, and around three hundred thousand.
For the next four.
For the next four.
Yes ma'am.
And you, you mentioned something about ownership, but the paperwork seemed to indicate it was a lease.
That's just the verbiage from the financing company, so you guys own it. Once you buy it, all the hardware is yours, and then the only thing that's a recurrent fee here is since we're financing it, for everything within the budget, then it'll, you're effectively paying five years for a ten-year licensing agreement, which is the backend software. So that bakes in the maintenance and contracts, the unlimited, also when we talk about server spaces that we're freeing up, because you get unlimited cloud storage, and all the actual retention of the camera happens on the device itself, so all that gets baked into the license, and it's a ten-year term.
Okay, so we, we pay for it in five years.
Then there's nothing for the second five years, so essentially, you have five more years to plan.
What happens at the?
The hardware is still yours, then you would just have to renew the software at that point in time.
And what's the?
The ten years.
I mean, I know you can't tell us what it's.
So you can do three, five, or ten years. So that's the good thing about it, is you can forecast, but the big thing that we haven't brought up yet, when you guys mentioned expanding this to potentially grade schools, so this all co-terms. So what I mean by that is, if you bought just, let's say, a hundred cameras today, and then you do a grade school two years from now, it effectively all pulls together and punts out the renewal. So the big thing is, we don't want you guys getting nickel and dime every year, starting ten years from now. You're like, oh, we have two cameras today, five cameras next day, it's impossible, we'll forecast for that. So as you go from this point forward, you would know those high schools, if you stop right there with Verkata in ten years, you're beyond the hook. You can call me a year ahead of time saying, hey, a renewal's coming up, what does that blip look like? And you can actually forecast for it, down to the descent. But then as you move forward, if you were to go with different schools, you effectively continue to push that out. Like Brevard School District is our largest client right now in the state. They started with us back in twenty seventeen, and they've never had a renewal as a result of that. But at any time, if you want to do a quick audit to your point, you would just call me as your rep. I would send you back the paperwork saying, hey, this is what you'd be on the hook for. And you can also get ahead of that as well, by doing an early renewal. If you know, hey, we have, let's say, a lot of capex budget this year that we can allocate towards it a couple of years before it comes up, you can effectively push it out from a year that you think it might be a little bit more tight.
And you, you said there's a twenty-four-seven monitoring, is that?
Yeah, so it comes baked in.
Who's, who, I mean, considering that these are children, who's doing the monitoring?
Yeah, so we have a service, we can't, I can tell you guys offline, we can't actually say it out loud, but it's a five-star service, has three redundant states across the US that monitor it for you guys, and that's basically an intrusion detection system. You tell it when the system's armed. So traditionally with schools, it's once it's under lock and key, they'll turn it on for after-hours versus like, while students are around. When it's around, you can set up proactive alerts, based on areas of interest, times of interest, people, license plates, and vehicles, and then that can just get sent out to the administration. So I was talking to Mr. Weaver about it, you guys can have your SROs monitor that stuff in real time, and then after-hours would go to the service.
All right, Mr. Leary?
Okay, I got, go ahead.
I apologize.
I got some questions.
Go ahead.
No, I think, I think that was pretty much it.
You had some comments, though, right?
My only comment is, is the vape detection. I think I mentioned this earlier, I, I sort of feel sorry for kids nowadays, being so overly, I mean, I understand the safety implications, but we're, we've got vape detectors in the bathrooms, is that, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The school's been having some nicotine toxicity issues, and like, people that have been overdosing as a result. So nice thing is, they'll actually give you real-time awareness, where you can't like, legally have a camera, and what our cameras do is, it superimposes, anytime we have an alert from a different piece of our hardware, so in this case, a sensor goes off, when you click on the clip, let's say it says twelve fifteen, someone vaped, when you click on it, it'll show the reading, if anyone's tracking that, but off to the right, it'll superimpose anyone that was in the image leading up to that alert and after. So that way, there's no like, time spent, at the end of the day, doing a daily audit, to figure out, okay, hey, in this one system, we got a vape alert, now let's go over and call Mr. Weaver and scrub through the cameras. It does it for you, and it'll be, hey, there were six people in that frame of view at this time, here who it is. So then to Sandra's point earlier, when you walk into a meeting with the parents, it's no longer a he-said, she-said thing, it's, we have visual evidence to the proof versus we're making an allegation.
I've repeatedly asked the superintendent to bring us any security and safety measures that he can, to, to bring to us as a board, and I appreciate that, because if you have someone that is, as we've had in past years, at a graduation, if we had a camera like in a stadium, and someone's made threats, death threats, and you have additional law enforcement, if that person is recognized immediately as they enter the field, I mean, you can, it, it, it's just, it's life and death.
AI, AI is best. I mean, we actually teach that facial recognition at our AI classes.
There are things I hear about it that I don't like, but I like this part of it, for sure.
All right, Mr. Leary?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. Let me preface my comments by saying that, you know, I'm like Mr. Buckles, I wholeheartedly support, you know, new technology for protecting our kids. The heartburn I have is that we bring a one point eight million contract, which I'm assuming that this is a sole-source provider, and that we don't bid this.
Yeah, we're on a contract, we bid out the, the financing, so there were three quotes that were provided for all the financials, but we're also utilizing a state contract called PEPM, which allows us to.
You're, we're piggybacking on state contract for you.
Correct. I believe it, there should be somewhere where it says as per PEPM on some of the quotes, it should be at the top of it.
I'm sure I missed that. Okay, and then the funding, is this going to be funded out of legislative funds for school safety, or one point eight million in capital outlay? And didn't you just say last month that we were going to have some issues with capital outlay?
We use some old, old special funds, and Lennon knows that once those are gone, they're gone, but we set it up like a master purchase agreement. By statute, you can do a lending for five years, but the money, the eight hundred, the eight hundred thousand I had provided for this year for old capital outlay funds. I took out all, if you'll remember in the lending workshop, I took out all departments that requested capital, lending included, and I put that, they requested capital in the, capital outlet in the general fund, I moved it to older capital outlay funds.
So.
Before, yes, we're going to have, I want the whole one point five mill for special facilities and everything, but these are some older year funds. Moving forward for a year is two, three, five, that will be up to my predecessors, in order to find money for that. But since it'll be, if it's approved, and it's a five-year note, moving forward in the special facilities, you can subtract out debt if you have those master purchase agreements from the one point five special facilities participation. So we would be able to, you know, make this pay, move forward.
I, I just have some concern with the age of our, our buildings, from the standpoint of, yeah, we need security, but we also need to keep roofs and windows and things like that. I just hope we don't find ourselves a couple of years from now, trying to figure out, you know, what we're going to cut to, to do capital outlay. And, you know, the timing of it as a, as an emergency item certainly didn't give me the time that I would like to digest it, and maybe talk to some, some people in Tallahassee about, you know, is there going to be funding available, that maybe we could piggyback this on. And maybe we can do that, you know, in the upcoming session, although we've already got some, some, some things lined up. So, you know, I just, I got some real heartburn, I'll, I'll be honest with you, about several aspects of it. And, and again, I do support it, and I think it probably is a fantastic, you know, if you're already on a state contract, they've, you've been vetted, and.
All that, yeah.
Obviously, you're a, you're a good company. So, anyway, I think that's it for me, Madam Chairman.
Okay, and Mrs. Odom, in regards to our, our school safety money, we don't get that anymore, do we?
We do get, but it's not. It is still a categorical, but we use probably eighty-five to ninety percent of that for our school, two, three source offices.
Oh, okay. So that's already earmarked, pretty much.
I will, Madam Chairman, if, I guess everybody's asked their questions, I can't, I mean, I know Rhonda Odom well enough to know that she's got capital outlay funding put around in several little boxes here and there, and she's been, she's been, she's been preparing, she's been preparing for this with the superintendent for quite a while, along with staff, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposal.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I guess, I'll second it, it doesn't look like anybody else is.
All right, because it was going to die there. All right, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles for L-three, Ricotta Camera Refresh Agreement, that we accept this offer, and it was seconded by Mr. Phil Leary. Any further discussion? David already checked that earlier.
I just, I just have one, I do want to ask the superintendent, you very confident about this?
Yeah, and I, believe me, after working in a high school for the number of years I have, and all the things that are going on, we hear around the country, we can't afford not to have this. So I wholeheartedly support it.
And so we supporting you. All right, so with that being said, are we ready to vote? All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you all. Now, no more cars should be, you know, unresolved if anything, damage, anything should happen to them. All right?
Madam Chairman, on L-four, I'm going to lead the discussion and Ms. Huff is going to help me, and Ms. France and Dr. Coleman are here. This was an item that actually came up yesterday in the discussion that the superintendent and his staff, and I was fortunate enough to be on the Google meets with Patrick Bell, our lobbyist in Tallahassee, talking about, you know, the session this year, or this next year starts in January, January seventh. They'll actually start committing meetings next month and start working on their budget and programs and funding, and DOE's already got a draft budget out. So basically what we're proposing here is a request for funding that would be made by application to the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, which does all agricultural buildings, fairs, any type of agricultural facility under their budget, and that goes through the legislative process, but it doesn't go through DOE and the Education Appropriations Committees, it goes through the Ag Committees, and, which is a good thing. And so what this would be is an agricultural education and promotion facility we would build at the existing John Eubanks Agricultural Center, the almost forty acres that we have out off of Cricket Road and Silver Lake Drive. It would be utilized by all four high schools for their FFA program and essentially would allow us to expand our agricultural education programs and provide a very unique opportunity for those kids that eventually will be working in agriculture. And I can tell you, when I was at the University of Florida, there were thirty-five hundred students in the College of Agriculture. Today, I think there's almost eight thousand.
Yeah.
It's exponentially, the Ag industry is growing in a different way. Technology and food safety are two of the biggest things. So we do have to have a cost share of forty percent with this, but we can use the land, which is worth probably a half million dollars easily, and some other things. We have, the site is already there, a cleared site where there was a former security trailer, there's electric and water, and it just would be a wonderful thing. And I'm doing this, if you all remember, I think it was my first meeting, Mr. Buckles directed me to work, you know, get some money from the Department of Ag. Well, I have to give the credit to Ms. Huff, she's the one that kind of pushed me. And then we had the call yesterday, you know, some of these things just, you know, happen, and we're in a very unique position with the leadership in the legislature this next year. So we are recommending that the board approve the application for funding, is that correct, Laura?
Unanimous, we need an approval to go forth to request the funding.
That's correct, okay.
So that's what we're doing today.
We know that we intend to apply, but it's, you have to approve it and then we'll write the application.
The right application, so.
It may or may not get funded, but we need your approval to go forward.
And so we have some concepts visually, and then this is kind of, it'll be somewhat of a Butler Building with a classroom and bathrooms, and that's just a rough rendering, but we can then tie in new cattle pens and make it a state-of-the-art animal science facility and do other agricultural education things there too. So with that, I'll move item L-four for approval based on, and we do have to have this in by September first, that's why we're pushing.
Dylan, one question, and putting it up for the land in with it as a match, is it still, is still property or a joint property of the Putnam County School District in University of Florida?
Oh, absolutely.
It's a joint property, okay.
Yeah, they will only fund the new construction, the buildings, the buildings, the cow pens, and we're hoping some of the fencing.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item L-four, agriculture, education, and promotion facility, request the funding, and it was seconded by Mr. David Buckles. Any further discussion for this phase, so that they can get started? Hearing none, are we ready to vote? All right, and thank you, Mr. Leary, for the explanation, it helped me to understand it better. All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. We are now out of emergency session. We have no unfinished business and we have no new business for this meeting, so we are now ready for our reports from the board members, the attorney, and the superintendent.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'd like to bypass the board meetings because I have four granddaughters playing volleyball games for Palaca High School in St. Augustine right now, and I'd like to go watch it.
Okay, what's the mission to get in there?
I'll get you in free when you come.
No, I was going to make you give each one of us what the mission is.
Excuse me, I would appreciate it.
Drive carefully.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll start with you, Mr. Leary.
Madam Chairman, that was, my, L-four was what I was going to discuss as part of the, part of my board comments. I will say, in the superintendent and I, you know, discussing our legislative priorities and some things that we can do, we are in a unique position legislatively with both Representative Payne and the leadership, Senator Hudson, and some of our other friends to be able to have another good year. After that, we'll see, but we're looking to, to work with our team in Tallahassee to move things forward. Thank you.
All right, and thank you again. All right, Mrs. Wagner?
I had a little bit of a mouth surgery this past week, so I'm going to, I'm just going to pass on my comments today.
Thank you, Mrs. Wagner. All right.
Okay, first, I'd just like to thank Ms. Whitehurst for the G-Y-O, got that right, the whole program and just how much work you've put into it. And a couple of former students moved when it was parrot-to-pro, and it's amazing to see them blossom as teachers. And I do not believe that that would have been possible had it not been for this program. So thank you for all that you do and will do. I thought that it was a really smooth start to school. I participated in parent drop-off, I thought it went really well. Preseason volleyball tournament last week at Crescent City Junior-Senior High School was really good, the volleyball was really good. Interlock and Crescent City and Pearson-Taylor were there, very competitive games. It's always fun to watch when girls are really competing at a pretty high level. Don't forget tomorrow, no, Thursday night is Take Stock in Children, and it's a great program, and I hope we can really get behind them and support it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Okay, real quick, we just want to mention our retirees and let them know that we do appreciate everything that they've done. Mrs. Christine Manville for twenty-two years and one month, Jonathan Battles, twenty-five years, two months, and Ms. Linda Becker for thirty-three years. Retirement is not the end of the road, it is the beginning of the open highway. And so we wish them well and we thank them for their services to the Putnam County School District and especially to our children. Just want to mention quite a few of the items that I read in our agenda pertaining to mental health. It is real and it looks like our district is on top of it. I read the proposed items there that we're signing, the Mental Health Support, Helping Hands, Outreach Community Care Network, the therapy support alongside, and I've questioned these, but every one of them had to do with mental health and working with our students, and I got a thorough explanation. One of the greatest examples I heard was if a child gets into a fight and they narrow it down to anger management, that student can go and work on those things. And so many licenses allotted for the elementary and so many for the high school. This is great and it helps us to at least try and help our students and get them in the right path to deal with whatever is going on in their lives. Just want to congratulate two of our, I'm trying to think, management team. No, that's not what you call them. Here, leadership team, yes. Laura France being a presenter at Cognia Conference in Lexington, Kentucky. You go, girl, and you represent us well, we're proud of you. And Mr. Hinky will be representing in New York City if you need a chaperone or somebody. He's going for the superintendent, on behalf of the superintendents, and we're doing such an excellent job in our district. He will be speaking on school improvement and how we got to where we are, you know, looking at, you know, what statistics might say we should be doing. We're definitely beating the odds, and so he will be doing that. And again, I want, ditto to what Mrs. Pickens said in regards to grow your own, and I just wanted to mention one other thing with you, Mrs. Whitehurst. One of the advantages these parrot-to-pros have when they come in is that peace on classroom management. You can't teach them if they're hanging from the ceiling. So they are learning from the teachers on the job. Oh, yeah, you have some great teachers, but if they can't control the kids, they can't teach, so, so that's great. And the final thing, this is for Mr. Leary, he forgot to mention, he has gotten some calls in regards to the lights at the Palaca High School stadium.
We're on it.
Concerns, and it would have been a bigger, bigger, bigger concern had we lost that game or been behind and couldn't, you know, finish the game out, so I know you're on.
Everybody that had called, and I got several emails and calls, that happened to be my senior year, we were playing Stark and we were beating them thirty-five to nothing, and beginning into fourth quarter, the lights, all the lights mysteriously went out. So it does happen.
All right, and thank you, we knew you were taking care of it, taking care of it.
I've talked to Mr. Humphries personally, and they're on top of it.
All right, and I'll let you know tomorrow night if they go out because.
I'll be there too.
Yeah, I'll be announcing, so we need you to get it, get her done. All right, Madam Attorney?
I don't have anything to report at this time. I am going to the Frerey School Board Attorney's Conference this weekend, so.
Where are you going?
Oh, it's in Fort Myers this time.
Oh.
It's a little further away than you would have hoped, but they wanted to, you know, put it there because of the hurricane and everything and help the environment. But hopefully I'll something to report at the next meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for going.
All right, Mrs. Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Ms. Pickens, had a great start. I want to thank all of our school staff, our parents, and I know we, you know, first couple of days, it's always a little bumpy, but I think it's smoothed out, so, and hearing some of the stories in other districts, we have a lot to be thankful for. I did get a chance to go visit every single school those first two or three days and just talk to the administration and watch some of the kids' movements and all that, and they really have a good handle on it, so credit to them. Our athletic programs are in full swing, and you can tell Mr. Buckles is supporting them. But we, you know, we're already in the football season, volleyball, swimming, cross-country, golf, I mean, we have so many opportunities for kids to be involved, so that's a real blessing. We started, we're starting back our podcast program, and actually I interviewed, had two interviews today. I love doing the interviews. I just ask questions and sit back and let them answer, but interviewed the, some of the folks from Feed the Need, and I know Mr. Leary's on that board, and we actually are showing, or not showing it, playing that tomorrow is what Mike told me, so tune in. Is there a certain time or it's just going to be published on?
We'll put it out in the morning.
In the morning, so that interview will be on there and you can learn a lot about Feed the Need. Feed the Need is actually going to have an event at the brewery, Zaya City Brewery, Thursday at six P.M. And I'm going to say a few words about kind of the partnership we have with Feed the Need and how they are really supporting our students. Students come to school hungry, they can't learn, so that's a vital service they provide. I can't say enough about that. I also interviewed the head football coach and athletic director at Interlock and Junior-Senior High School. And of course, they have a pretty good winning streak going in football right now. I think Ms. Whitehurst might know one of those guys. But they, but, you know, we talked a lot about not only athletics, but how athletics is supporting our academics. You know, we have student athletes, they're students first, and I'll tell you, I'm so pleased with the way they focus on academics first, then athletics next. So it really does play an important role. And finally, just want to thank everybody that's been involved in working on our drawings, and Mr. Bowlen did a superb job presenting that today. You know, the, there's a lot of information, and I can't tell you how pleased I am with the way he's navigating all that and working with our architects and our, you know, our construction managers and all that. It is, it's a huge job, and you can see that we're on our way to building three schools, and I'm very proud of that, and there's a lot of uncertainty there about, you know, funding and all that, but, you know, this is a monumental time in our history of our school district. So hopefully, we all kind of learned a lot about our presentation today, so hats off to everyone involved with that. I think Mr. Adams is going to be a little excited about that new school being built down there, and he's had a lot to do with the design, you know, giving real-time suggestions. So thank you, Tim, for, I think you've been up here twice today, haven't you? Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Okay, there's nothing else to come before the board. We're adjourned.
Thank you all.